All right. We have, first item is items from council. There are two items, two proclamations, well, one, excuse me, one proclamation, and then the performance report from VDC. But we wanted to move, is Lisa here with?
She's back in the back.
There she is. Hold off, Lisa. We'll move you up to after those two items so that you don't have to wait till the very end. You're on our city manager report, so there's no need for you to wait. So you're gonna, you're here to talk about the Victoria Transit operations. Y'all don't, council, do y'all not mind if we do that?
Right.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and dispense with the first thing, which is we have a proclamation for Club Westerner.
This proclamation is signed by Mayor Paul Palosik this day, and it reads in part, "Whereas Club Westerner started in May of 1927 as a pavilion dance floor as part of Victoria's first entertainment center known as Pleasure Island. Whereas on January 12th, 1956, John M. and Lorenza Viafranca began leasing Club Westerner from Mr. Jack Walton and began promoting weekend dances, eventually purchasing the hall and the entire island in 1965. Whereas numerous iconic performers such as Willie Nelson, Hank Snow, B.J. Thomas, Little Joe, and Sonny and the Sunliners have performed at Club Westerner in the past, Mr. James Viafranca has said that the success and longevity of the business was due largely to his parents, Mr. and Mrs. John M. Viafranca, bringing in different genres and all types of music to the entire Victoria community. Whereas Grammy Award-winning band Asleep at the Wheel performed on July 1st, 2017 to celebrate Club Westerner's 90-year anniversary. Now therefore, I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby declare the 15th day of August, 2017, to be Club Westerner Appreciation Day in Victoria, Texas, and congratulate the Viafranca family on the 90th anniversary of Club Westerner."
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Hey, Johnny. How are you? Who are we there?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Roseanne.
That's incredible. Incredible.
Ninety years, that's wonderful. And I don't think you could find a Victorian who has not been to Club Western for at least one event in their lifetime. I know I've been many times, so.
Just a few words.
Come on up, come on up to the microphone.
Microphone, James. Right there, there you go.
So we can all hear?
Right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a few words from the Viafranca family. We want to thank all of Victoria for supporting the dance hall. It has taken every ethnicity, race, color, creed to make the dance hall what it is. And we really do appreciate that, that everyone has given us an opportunity to let us host your party, your celebration, or bring in a great band that's to your liking. Remember, music doesn't pick you, you pick the music. So by bringing in a variety of music, and I think our history of the bands that have been there since 1927 has shown that you run the gamut of music. So thank y'all again very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do VDC. We've got a couple handsome young guys here, and Adrian's gonna come forward and tell us about the performance report.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you all on behalf of VEDC. We've long enjoyed our partnership with the city and the Sales Tax Corporation in trying to promote economic development activities for this community. We thought it wise, the VDC board thought it wise, it was about that time to take a look at VEDC's, the projects that we have had an opportunity to influence over these some 14, 15 years. And we did this impact study about four to five years ago, and we just thought it was time to refresh it. And so we thought this was a great opportunity for us to kind of look through some of the highlighted points of that economic impact study. The study again looked at the years 2003 through 2016. They totaled 21 projects that we could say we influenced or supported during that time period. And some of the impactful numbers, I think, follow. VDC-supported projects resulted in an estimated $2.5 billion in revenues for direct businesses in Victoria and supported an additional $1.7 billion in revenues for indirect and induced businesses. And that results in a $4.2 billion economic output for revenues for businesses in the area, quite significant. Also, the businesses directly employ 2,076 workers, direct hires, and also create an additional 2,775 indirect and induced jobs in the area. That's a total of 4,851 employees in the community. Similarly, salaries for direct workers totaled $1.6 billion from those direct businesses, business activity spending and spending of its employees. And they support an additional $1.3 billion in those indirect and induced jobs as well. That's a total of $2.9 billion. As far as taxes are concerned, year to year, we come before you all and kind of look at just the property taxes that businesses that we've influenced, those 21 businesses that we've influenced over that time period, and what that economic impact is just from a property tax revenue standpoint. But failed to mention this at the beginning, this sales, this, this report takes on sales taxes and other spinoff activity from those direct businesses. And with respect to that, those businesses are estimated to have generated $55.9 million in additional sales and property tax collections totaled for local taxing districts over the last 14 years. Total value of additional taxable property totaled $628,809,000. Moving on, just a couple of quick notes as I finish up this report or highlights from this report. When you consider the investment that the city has made in VEDC through the sales tax over that time period, if you were just to look at the direct jobs created, that 2,076 direct jobs, you could say that for every $3,156 of investment, we've created one direct job. And if you were to factor in the indirect and induced jobs from those spinoff effect, then for every $1,351, you create a job in this community. So it's something to be thinking about as far as investment and return on that investment. Finally, beginning in 2016, the local taxing districts are projected to collect approximately $17.6 million per year, which is a return of 269% on the investment that the community has made in VDC over 14 years. I hope as we consider some of these numbers, that you truly do consider VEDC to be an investment. We've enjoyed the contract for marketing that we've had, as already mentioned, with the city. We're honored to serve in that role as kind of the lead marketing agent for recruitment of primary jobs to our region that has this kind of spinoff effect as well. And I hope this also will be an encouragement that we want to continue moving forward. If the results of the impact say anything, it says that the ROI, the return on investment, is there, and that we want to continue to forge ahead with our aggressive economic development, marketing activity, and our relationship with the city, between VDC and the city. So with that, I'll take this time to answer any questions.
Good job. Your, your words are always so measured, Adrian. You're very thoughtful in your comments. I'll just say that I'm very proud of you two and your other staff. Y'all do an excellent job. You're always so enthusiastic, and I've seen it firsthand, so thank you for that. I, I know the city, I hope going far into the future continues to be a serious contributor to VEDC. I don't see any reason that should change. I hope that, I know your efforts don't stop at the city limits, though. You market the county and even surrounding area, and I hope that those other areas can participate more to make sure you have a stable budget going forward in the future. So, and also, of course, I've gone out on the limb saying y'all are gonna land a really big one soon, so my fingers are crossed. I know you're working hard.
We keep closer and closer. The more at bats we get, the closer we get to hitting that ball out of the park again.
That's a good way to put it, very true. And it's through your efforts. It doesn't happen in one year or two. It takes a long time. And y'all have built up a tremendous amount of goodwill and relationships. It's, it's coming, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, well, you, you picked up on that, Dale. Yes, that little added pressure. Go get one, hurry up.
We're working on it every day. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll move, as I mentioned, the city manager's report up now. If Ms. Cortinas is here, she's gonna talk to us about the Victoria Transit operations. Now, you do this once a year for us, right?
I didn't come last year, I was someplace else.
Okay.
But I'm glad to be back. I'm Lisa Cortinas, I'm the Director of Transportation Services for the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. And I initially did my report here for you today on our bus stop passenger amenities. But I am going to address our transit services in general, do the bus stop report, and then if you have any questions, I can address them at the end, if that's, if that's okay. I have some handouts for you, which will help some of the new council. And I have one more. Okay. Ninety years is a lot, but Victoria Transit has only been around for 20 years. In fact, 2017, we celebrate our 20 years. We've, the planning commission, as you know, we have an interlocal agreement with the City of Victoria to provide transportation services for you. So this program is actually yours. The program has grown. We started in 1999, offering demand response service. Basically, people called because we wanted to look at the demand for services. Ridership was very high, and we looked at, of course, demand response, where we pick people up at their home is very costly. So we looked at alternatives to providing that demand response service. As our system grew, we grew into not only providing demand response, but we're also providing fixed route services. The handouts I have before you, you'll get a book, it's for our fixed route service and our demand response. It's basically a ride guide for our customers. It talks about our routes, the days of service, gives you some riding rules for each of our routes. It also covers the fares. And that information is available at our transit office on Laurent Street. I also provided to you a report. I know a lot of people like to see how efficient we're operating. And what I did is I looked at our statistics, and I pulled some of the transit systems from across the state, and I compared them to the same size, pretty much the population. I looked at population and the size of those communities. And so that report reflects our ridership, our mileage, by each of those communities. And as you can see, I did a comparison against Port Arthur, which has a population of 54,000, Texarkana, which has a population of 75, Longview, which has a population of 81, and Tyler, which has a population of 98. And as you can see at our statistics, we travel a lot of miles. And the reason being is we have, on our demand response pair transit services, we're taking people to San Antonio for medical appointments, we go to the VA for our veterans, we go to Houston for a lot of specialized medical care. So that's why we have such a large, our mileage numbers are very high as compared to other cities. And then at the bottom in that chart, I also provided you the type of revenues we receive. And I kind of want to note, if you can look at the contract revenues, we, we look at other resources and how we can generate funds to help support the program. And so we have a contract to provide medical transportation services through a private company. It's called Medical Transportation Management. And it's basically taking Medicaid clients to their appointments. That contract revenue also reflects a contract that we have with Affecture to Arms Adult Daycare to transport their clients. We have some other contracts with DARs, with Devro. So we, we try to work with other agencies that have client transportation needs. And then that last column, which is other revenue, that reflects the City of Victoria revenue that we receive, but also GCRBC revenue that we put into the program.
Good, I like this. I don't remember seeing that information before.
I thought it would be helpful this time around to compare us against other cities.
It is.
Is it appropriate for a question right now?
Yes.
Looking at the, the funding, the federal and state funding for Victoria versus some of the other cities that you have listed, some of the other cities listed have a considerable amount of greater funding. Is there a reason why we haven't matched that? I'm looking at, is it based upon ridership? Is it based upon population? Because I'm not seeing any.
Yes. The way the formula works through the Department of Transportation and also the federal side, how we receive our federal money, on the federal side, it's just based on population alone and square mileage, that's it. They don't take into any account performance. On the state side, they take into account those two factors, but they also factor in local revenues, because they want to see local participation, local investment, so that counts towards the funds that we receive. And also, okay, it's local revenues, population, oh, and then the performance, of course, your ridership. And that's how they, the state determines your allocation annually.
Okay. Is that all that you have?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was adding up. So the four numbers, the federal, state, and the fare box, and the contract revenue, all that adds your total budget?
Yes.
So I got 2.7?
Correct.
Okay. And then, of course, our part, just while you're here, and I'll just, people aren't familiar with the transit system. I certainly am not an expert in everything, and I know Ms. Solis is on the board, is that correct, for the, the PIC and specifically this stuff?
Yes, for the planning commission.
Because the city's actually a little less than 10% of your total budget.
Yes, it's like 8%.
8%. And as I was talking about it earlier with city manager, it's, you do require the city's permission to operate, which is great, where there's no problem there. But you, it's, it's run by your board quite a bit. And I do want to thank you, though, and all of you, you've always been very accommodating to our requests, because we do tend to get a lot of feedback.
Right.
Because they think, you said at the beginning of your presentation, the program is yours. I don't know about that. I kind of look at it as y'all's, and we're just a partner with you. But I do want to thank you for, the organization and the board members are always accommodating. When people give us feedback, we pass it on to y'all. And I suppose that the public also communicates with you guys considerably.
Yes, we're required to annually do public participation. We post our projects every year, public notices, and then we also always request public hearings. We just, the planning commission just underwent a five-year study for our whole region, because we don't just provide transportation here in Victoria, we actually provide transportation in eight counties. So we have to do this regional plan, and Victoria's included in that regional plan.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good information, so.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Would you like me to proceed with the bus passenger?
Yes, please do. I'm sorry, I thought you were through.
That's okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay. We can go to the first slide. Okay, a lot of people want to know what are, what's a passenger amenity. Basically, it's a covered shelter, and it's built locally, so we use a local business and both for the construction of the shelter itself, but all the concrete work, installation, all that is done locally. But basically, it consists of a concrete slab, the steel frame shelter, a bench and trashcan. When we initially started, we were purchasing these items from up north. Well, it took a lot, it cost like $3,000 just to ship a shelter, so it wasn't really cost effective. So we talked to a local welder to see if he could fabricate one for us, making sure that it met the criteria as far as us locally. You know, we wanted it to last at least 10 years. Because of the area that we're in, we wanted to make sure it was conducive to our weather, the heat conditions. So they took all that into consideration, and that's just what we came up with. And of course, it has a space for a wheelchair user, as you can see. And also, we added some backsplashes, when, I'm sorry, not backsplashes, windbreaks to the back of it to help with the wind. Because we, we have some shelters that were old, that were fully enclosed, but they were hot. They may have covered you from the, from the shelter, from the sun on top, but when it's enclosed like that, it created a lot of heat. So we opened the passengers up so that way, the shelters up, so that way it could be a better breeze, so.
Are y'all, y'all responsible for all the maintenance of them?
Yes, we are. We have a bus porter that goes out twice a week to, of course, we have quite a bit of shelters, so he looks at all the locations and dumps the trash twice a week, along with the bus washing that he does. Okay, next slide. I've provided you some pictures of some of the side, some of the projects that we have. Some include a full shelter, some are just a basic bench and trashcan. But whatever we do, we want to make sure that we have accessible paths of, paths of travel for our shelters, taking into consideration there may be a wheelchair user that wants to be protected from the elements, so we make sure that we have a wheelchair space in there as well.
Lisa, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you know if anybody took a look at the one on, well, there is not one, I requested one on Glendale and Nova?
Yes.
Did somebody go out there for the senior citizens out there?
Yes, we do. We currently have a bench there, but we don't have a covered shelter, and that's on our list as soon as, you know, we can receive additional funding. And that's kind of what I'm gonna talk to in my, my presentation. But we have, most of these locations are on the public's right-of-way. We do have a few that are on private property, like the one to the top right, that one is at the University of Houston. Next slide. Okay, like I said, we operate our four fixed routes during the day, and then we have three evening fixed routes. Our buses run every 30 minutes, except for the Gold, which runs every one hour. And we have currently 160 bus stop locations. Next slide. Okay, the criteria that we look at when we're determining who's gonna get these bus stops and bus shelters, we look at the daily boarding. So we have our, our statistics that we look at, that's basically how many people are disembarking at that bus stop. We look at the site itself to make sure there's available space, the conditions. We look at the slope, any obstructions when we're, when we're looking at a particular site. We also look at our customers who have limited mobility, and we track that information. So if there is a bus stop that we know that there's a wheelchair user at that bus stop, we want to give it priority in, in putting a bus passenger shelter there. Then we also look at our demographics, similar to like what we have to do for community development block grant money. I know in the past, the City of Victoria has provided us with community development block grant money to provide shelters. And we looked at the, the area where those shelters went. And so that's kind of what we look at as well, as one of our criteria, making sure that minority and low-income populations receive those same benefits. And then, of course, the last criteria is our transit transfers. We look at how many people are transferring at that location, because you're gonna have a lot of people standing around at that transfer station, so we want to make sure that we have a shelter for them to, to stand under. Okay, what is the cost? The cost just for a basic shelter is about $7,800. One with a cement pad is 92. If we had to, if we have to add some additional sidewalk or curb cutout, the project could be 12 or more. And then, number four, which is just a basic bench and trashcan with a cement pad, is about $2,600. Okay, how have the projects been funded in the past? Of course, like I said earlier, we rely on, well, we've received community development block grant money. We rely on our federal money. There's two projects, of course, our regular funding that we receive under the Small Urban Pot, and then there's a special pot of funding under the 5339 program, which is to help with bus replacements and bus facilities. And then, of course, the state, when they have additional money and they do competitive call for projects, I also look at those, those funds. And coming to almost my last slide, we do have an opportunity right now. I've actually written a grant that's due on August the 25th, which will be applying for $367,000 to complete 83 bus shelter projects. We're also gonna replace 10 of our vehicles at the cost of about $900,000. And we're proposing to, well, we've already requested transportation development credits for the Department of Transportation as soft match. So we're, we're hoping that it's competitive, we're hoping that our application will, will score high. We have a lot of need as far as bus replacements, and that's been indicated in our application. And that's all I have. I have my contact information. You're welcome. If you have additional questions, you can call or email me.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck with that grant.
I know, thank you.
I know you're very capable.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, anything, any other questions for Ms. Cortinas, or?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're still in items from council. Ms. Chalpas?
Yes, I noticed there wasn't any budget discussion on the agenda. Don't know if that was an oversight, or that we're in budget consideration all through this period, and we can talk about budget at any time, even though it's not listed. Can you give me a rendition of that?
It wasn't an oversight. We, our next meeting on the budget is August 24th, next week, so.
If you wanted to have budget discussion tonight, it is still legal, even though it's not posted?
No, sir. I can respond with a factual statement if you have a question. But that, that's, that's all I can do. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
As long as your answer's right, keep on going. I'll stop you if you get something wrong.
No, okay. Since I work on the agenda, it wasn't oversight, so just, we'll do that next week.
We certainly have a number of more opportunities.
Change that number, we'd have to go back and start the timer over again.
You talking about tax rate?
Yes, sir.
Sorry?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
On the tax rate?
Yeah.
Go down, but not up?
But since it's not on the agenda, it's not open for debate?
That's correct.
That should not be correct.
We can do it next Thursday. So, I mean, and.
Yeah.
We can, I mean, there's plenty of time if council so chooses to go up on the tax rate, because the final vote is scheduled for September 12th, so we, that gives us a couple of weeks there leadway if we need to adjust any calendars.
I'm just trying to avoid getting up against the crunch myself, and that we could have an open discussion about much of this as we went along.
Okay. All right, next week. Thank you, Ms. Chalpas. Is there anything else, counsel? Okay, if not.
I just want to pull D4, just for one question.
Okay, D4. Okay. No problem. All right, so we'll move into citizens' communication. Anybody that would like to come forward now and speak on any subject whatsoever, just name an address for the record, and try to limit your remarks to five minutes if possible. Okay, going once, going twice, seeing no one get up, we'll close citizens' communication and move straight into ordinances. And C1 does not have a public hearing.
That's correct. C1 is an ordinance amending Article II of Chapter 18 of the City Code, related to retirement and update and revise content for compliance and relevance, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, C1 passes. The rest of them do have public hearing.
C2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to adjust various fees for services administered by the Department of Public Works, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C2 first, if anyone wants to come speak to this item only. Now would be the time. I didn't think anybody would jump up. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion. Counsel?
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion second.
fees for services administered by the Department of Public Works, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C2 first, if anyone wants to come speak to this item only. Now would be the time. I didn't think anybody would jump up. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion. Counsel?
Move to adopt.
Okay, we have motion, second. Did you have any comments or remarks for us?
Just going to, just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and we'll see these next three again, obviously, at our next meeting, too.
My only question is just for new construction, new taps, new everything, right? That's what it's addressing? Because it's not going to address any of the water bills or anything like that.
No, these are just, these are just the fees for mostly new construction.
Okay.
Service call type stuff?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is all of this included in, we're going to talk a little bit later about doing a complete study?
No, these, this is different. This is, this is our fees for individual services, and that's a rate study. So, it is completely different. Yes, ma'am.
Two different things.
Second and third reading will be on September 5th.
Okay, September 5th.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding your question. You're talking about the rate study that we're going to do?
Right, yeah. No. I'm just processing fees versus rates.
Okay.
Is different.
Monthly bills.
For example, the, these, these fees are for services such as installing a new water tap. The rate study that we're going to go over later today will encompass things like the usage component of our, how much we charge for 1,000 gallons of water.
There, but it's designed to make sure that we're collecting an appropriate amount.
Yes, both of them are designed to do the same thing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any more questions on C2?
Let me say something.
Yes.
Maybe clarify, I'm not really sure. These fees, an individual comes in and has a project, you know, and so these fees apply to that individual project. The water rate study is, that's what everybody that has the 22,000 accounts that we have, that's what that's in reference to. These are, yes.
Right, these, these are designed to recover our costs for a one-time service.
Okay, and we're comfortable with that, that, I think that's, you know, when we're about to do a study, I'm just wanting to make sure we're comfortable with these numbers.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. When I, when I come up with these numbers, I'm looking at our average cost for, for what the parts and the pieces and the materials and the labor and all of that cost for, for one particular service, and I look at each one of those services, and I look at what it's historically cost us, and then we adjust the rate up or down if we look like we're not meeting, not collecting all of our revenue, or returning all the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, item passes C3.
C3 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to adjust fee structure and policies for the Parks and Recreation Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C3, if anyone would like to speak to that item now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Questions? I have one, but anybody else have? I know you're just ready to answer questions, okay. Let me, my, I have some comments really for counsel. One of the things that I have had a lot of contact with some of the veterans groups here in town the last, this has been going on for about two years. There's a bit of frustration for, for example, Memorial Day reserving the gazebo and the fact that it's a Memorial Day holiday, and it's a veterans organization, and the Veterans Council typically does that, and they're frustrated about paying that fee to reserve that and whatnot. Also, the parade, the Veterans Day Parade has represented some issues in the past. Now, we do not have a fee for the parade fee. So, long story short, after talking with some folks, you know, the county has a Veterans Administration office, they actually have an office and employees for veteran services, and we think what we can do is, is if that office makes the reservation and helps coordinate the event, we can have an MOU or something with the county where there's no fee. It'd be very limited, just for those particular events, probably just Memorial Day, and as long as it comes through the county office, you know, government entity to one government entity, we can waive the fee. We have to be fair to everybody, so obviously, we don't want to, we have to find a mechanism to do it, because, you know, there's a lot of great organizations out there. I think our veterans groups are very special, and I think this would be an appropriate thing. So, in the second and third reading, I thought I'd bring back a recommended change. I'm really just kind of asking for consensus, and we'll get amended on the second and third reading. There are, go ahead, Jan.
A question, so their event that you're talking about is longer than three hours? Because the, if I'm looking at these fees, Daily Home Plaza events longer than three hours have a fee. Am I not looking at the right place?
Traditionally, I think if they reserve it, I thought there was a fee.
There's a fee.
Oh, there is. I'm in the wrong place.
I think if you just, yeah. Mr. Haupasske?
Was that also into Veterans Day or just Memorial Day?
Veterans Day if need be. I need to check and see, I don't know what they're reserving. I think they, I'm sorry, I think they actually do reserve the gazebo both days, so it would probably be just those two events, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and just the gazebo. So, and, and, you know, I, we'll make, we'll have a very specific recommendation at the second and third reading, but I wanted y'all to have time to think about it.
Let me clarify, Ms. Scott's question, Daily Home Plaza is $50, up to three hours. It goes up to $75 if it's, if it's the rest of the day.
It says it right there, I just didn't see it, I apologize.
That's okay.
And we have cooperative arrangements with the county, you know, we use parking lots and things, and they don't charge us, and so I think this is a reasonable thing, so. Okay, so we'll bring something back on the next second and third reading. Okay. So, we have a motion and second, right? Are there any other?
I'd like to point something out, if there's not any questions right at this point, which is new, and so I want to make sure y'all all, you know, pay attention to it. It's the fees for late payments. We've run into some issues when people don't pay, you know, they reserve for an event, they pay 25% down, and then they have, the rest of the dollar amount is due 60 days prior to the event, I believe, Jamie. And we have problems with people not paying that. So, we're instituting a late fee there, so 10% of their rental total if it's five days late, and then 20% if it's between six and 10 days late on paying, and then if it's after that, in here is that we're going to cancel the event. So, you know, I'd like for, to make sure you understand, that is our proposal to do that. We're trying to incent people to pay their dues, their fees when they're due.
Then they will be canceled.
And then the event would be canceled, yes, ma'am. That's correct. And we will notify, if this is passed, we will notify people that use, you know, the community center and then book things for special events in the parks. This is in both the community center and with parks events.
Then when you say park event, it would be any park?
Yes.
Not, not just Riverside Park?
Anything that's got a special event fee, yes, ma'am, or contracted fee.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
Yeah, good. Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, C3 passes, thank you. C4?
C4 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to adjust fees for the Development Services Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C4. If anyone would like to speak to that item only, please do so now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move, re-adopt.
Second.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions? We're not.
Basically, it's just those fees that you have on the CM1?
And we've been working over the last several years to do more cost recovery on these, and this is, looks like it's part of that process, so just, just to recover costs, not be overly exorbitant. Okay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you. C5?
C5 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to adjust various fees for services administered by the Fire Department and the Fire Marshal's Office, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So, we'll open the public hearing on C5. If anyone would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C5, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt. C5?
Second.
Motion and second. There is a new fee in here. Did you guys all see that?
Medic bike team?
Yes. So, chief, did you want to tell us about it? Why don't you, since it's new, on behalf of the public in here, too?
Are you talking about the MS fees?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we've been, the ambulance fee, we've been charging for many, many, many years, when we stand by at the football games on Friday nights, and that's with a contract with the school district. But we also, from time to time, get requests for bike medic teams, like on 5K races and some different things like that, where we need to be mobile, a little bit more mobile than just static, and so we have added that fee in, because we're starting to see that request for that service a lot more.
The bike team consists of how many people?
Two.
How many bikes?
Two and two.
Okay, so the ambulance fee, you, I thought you just said it has been there.
We have been charging it for a lot of years, it just hasn't been incorporated in that, in that particular, this is trying to get that in there where.
Codified in the ordinance, I guess is the word.
Yes.
Okay.
We've been charging VISA-D via contract.
That's correct.
It's, okay. But it's. No, okay.
Just to fulfill, I think it's UIL requirement, that they have a, an ambulance there, and anytime they're doing a kind of UIL-sponsored event.
Okay, no, I think this is a good thing. I mean, you've got trained professional staff, whether they're on bikes or whatnot, we do cost recovery. I know the PD, when they, they staff a lot of events, and there's a fee for that, so I think it's reasonable. Good. Questions? We do have a motion already, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you, thank you, chief. So, consent agenda, you want to do all of them except D4 first?
Sure. There are four items remaining on the consent agenda. They are first, D1, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 1st, 2017. Second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal participation agreement with Goodbye Purchasing Cooperative and all other documents necessary to allow for the purchasing of products from said purchasing cooperative and declaring an effective date. Third is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance and all other documents necessary to allow for the purchasing of products from said purchasing cooperative and declaring an effective date. And then, D5 is a resolution awarding the North Heights Utility Replacement Project Phase 4 to JNR Backhoe Services Incorporated for their low bid of $917,085, declaring, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. It passes D4.
D4 is a resolution awarding the 2016 17 Gate Valve and Fire Hydrant Maintenance Project to DMD Consultants Incorporated for their low bid of $47,540, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Thank you, questions?
I see this is a diagram, and it shows a section of the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we working on section by section to cover all the fire hydrants?
Yes, ma'am. We work in sections, and sometimes it may take us two or three years to complete a section just because of the budget we have for this area, but we'll finish this section and then move to another section, and then we'll, we'll roll back to it. Actually, this section was last done between the years of 2005 and 2008, so we're coming back to it.
I just wanted to make sure that, I said, oh, wait a minute, we're only doing a little section, so.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we do move around.
That's fine.
So, I know the scope of this.
The scope of this is pretty significant. They're turning them all on, checking flow and all that, but wasn't, wasn't the Fire Department kind of doing a little maintenance a few years back on some of that? They still do that? Was there some painting? Did y'all do?
Yeah.
They did flow testing.
They did flow testing, and then would turn in, turn in a ticket to us if there was something wrong with it.
Uh-huh. So, y'all still doing that? Okay.
No, absolutely. We do, as part of our ISO program, is that we, we exercise the hydrants and do flow tests and target hazards areas, and then we turn, just like you said, we have a maintenance agreement with these guys at our work order system, so that if we run into a hydrant that we can't get open, or a stuck valve or something like that, we turn that in so that that's processed very quickly.
How's it different from this? Or am I just confused? This is an independent group of contractors doing this?
Yeah, this is an independent contract, and this is a little bit more in-depth. They're going to come in and not only work these valves and the hydrants, which are two separate deals, but, but they will also sandblast these fire hydrants, paint them, exercise them, and work the internals also on them.
Couldn't get them, these guys to do, I guess.
Well, with a little more training, we might be able to, but I don't, I don't think they have the time.
No, I understand.
I don't think they have the time.
I understand now, this is critical. This has got to work when we show up. I got it.
Yes, this is one of those preventive maintenance actions.
Okay, very good, very good. I'm glad you pulled this one, Josie, I wouldn't have been able to ask that question. All right. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E1 is a resolution reappointing members to the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Show move.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. There's no voting on this one, right?
Well, there's no.
I mean, I'm sorry, there's no, I know we're going to vote.
Different kind of voting.
All the slots are filled, I'm sorry, all the slots are filled here. We don't have to, to choose people.
Ms. Solis and Mr. Bult, I said they would be reappointed, so.
Good job, thank you, Ms. Solis. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution reappointing three current members and appointing one new member to the Planning Commission and declaring an effective date, and this is the resolution you were thinking of that has a blank in it, where we do need to fill in one name to appoint a new member. At the last meeting, Gail Hoad and Eric Leonard, I believe, were each nominated for that position, and so I have ballots prepared which include their names. Mayor, if you'd like, we can do our, our normal voting procedure. Additionally, I have blanks on the ballots, in case there is another person that you would like to nominate, we can fill in names from the floor.
And we received no other applications for the position?
That's correct. If you would please put your name at the top of the ballot, I'll remind the public that we don't do secret ballots. These are public records that are available to the public. If you'll put your name at the top, and then please also put a number one at the top, since we do have an even number of council members here tonight, there's a possibility of a tie, and we may have to figure out how to resolve a tie.
We can pass notes.
That was an option.
All right, they, we have four votes for Gail Hoad, one vote for Eric Leonard, and one right in for Julia Welder, and so that would be a nomination for Gail Hoad to be filled into the blank, and then from that point, we would entertain a motion, mayor, to approve the resolution with that name in the blank.
We already, did I not get a motion and second already?
No, sir, because we had a blank in the resolution.
Okay, we did that first. I'm having trouble keeping up with that, and I'm sorry.[1763.66]
I move to adopt.
I second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Motion in second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. And we appreciate those folks and their service and they're willing to run as well. So appreciate that. E three?
E three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for a water and wastewater cost of service and rate design study with NewGen Strategies and Solutions in an estimated amount of $47,600 and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Would we doubt? Would like to have some questions on?
Okay. Motion in second. And questions first? Whoever wants to go?
Could, uh.
Would you like to?
Couple of comments before? We'll address all the questions, guarantee you that. Next to me, I have Dave Yankee. He's the president of NewGen Installation Solution besides Having a Good Taste in Jackets. A lot of people remember Dave. He, he was with us back in 2008. R W Beck, Automatic System. He helped us with that process implementation, everything else. That's over 10 years ago. Counsel, if approved, this resolution will, will allow NewGen to help us. By the way, I say he is the president of the company. I think I said that, make sure I did that. But anyway, what we're going to do in a nutshell here is look at the overall cost of the operation. And after we do that, we're going to look at the rate structure we have in place and maybe come up with some modification or a proposed new rate structure after the, after the study. And back to the conversation previously, looking at it this way, you got the total cost of the whole water wastewater operation. It's back to the, we were talking about installation fees and everything else. But the water fund also has other fees, installation fees, miscellaneous and all that. All that's going to be one big bubble, meaning that you have this cost and you have this revenue. And then you still got to come up with a rate structure to subsidize everything else. So it's all one package. So he's going to look at every component in itself, not as to if this installation is the right number. Here's your total cost of operation. Here's the current revenues that we're collecting and we're going to look at a rate structure. If there's any gaps that we need to increase or adjust the rate structure, that's basically in a nutshell. So with that said, Dave Yankee has a presentation, a quick one, brief. He's going to go through it real quick with you as to what is involved in this process. Okay?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here again. For the record, my name's Dave Yankee, president of the environmental practice for NewGen. And I did not call ahead of time to see what Gil was wearing, so. So what I want to do is go through very briefly, just tell you briefly about our farm, our qualifications to do this project. I'm going to tell you why cities do studies like water and wastewater cost of service studies and rate design studies. I'm going to talk about the project approach, how we will conduct the, the study. I will tell you what the specific project outcomes are, so you know what you will get at the end. And then I'm just going to close with a couple intangibles regarding our firm. So very briefly, you know, our firm, we're a 35-person financial consulting firm. We are not an engineering consulting firm. We are strictly financial. What we focus on working with are public sector utilities, specifically water, wastewater, solid waste, storm water, and then gas and electric utilities. Cost of service and rate design studies are one of our primary lines of business that we focus on in this utility area. And then, as Gil mentioned, you might have seen me before here when we were R W Beck and Reed Stone Yankee. So again, just to let you know, NewGen, we have four primary offices, Austin, Dallas. I'm in our Austin office, Dallas, and then Denver and Nashville, and then a number of other people around the, the country. I oversee 12 consultants that focus on specifically environmental consulting. That's water, wastewater, storm water, solid waste. And again, as I mentioned, I've been doing this type of work for over 25 years. Again, from a qualification standpoint, and this is what I want to mention to you, if you look at our firm, and we do the vast majority of our water, wastewater, cost of service, and rate design studies out of the Austin office, which I'm in, and our Dallas office, we typically, we look back, we typically do at least 100 studies every seven years or so. So, you know, you're talking over a dozen to 15, and that's probably a low number because the practice has been growing. And then I've just listed some of the clients we work with there, so just to give you a point of reference. So why does a city conduct a water and wastewater cost of service and rate design study? And I'm going to talk about just a couple specific examples here. We are working with numerous cities where they are undertaking major capital projects, whether it's water transmission lines, new wastewater treatment plant upgrades, major capital outlays to replace aging infrastructure. And a big thing also is purchasing water rights. Just as an example here, we're working with the city of Temple, Texas. We've worked with them, I've worked with them for over 20 years. They're in the midst of over a $100 million capital improvement plan for the next five years. So major planning and then what type of rates do you need to make sure you're meeting your debt service coverage requirements, which help you get good ratings for your debt when you go to the market? Another thing is to ensure the financial integrity of the city's water and wastewater utility. Basically, what I kind of say, eliminate surprises. And an example there, I've been working with, if anybody knows where Borger, Texas is, it's up in the Panhandle of Texas. I've worked there with them since 1994. And I'm going back up this fall. But we go in every four to five years just to check how their rates are doing, do an update for their rates. It's very important for them because they have some large industrial water users up there. And then just independent third party will come in. Again, I've been doing this over 25 years. We come in and we'll talk about what we're seeing in the industry, what the trends are, pricing, and things like that. So with regard to the cost of service and rate design study that we've proposed for the city of Victoria, we've listed out, I've got next couple slides, talk about our project approach. The key thing we're looking at is developing a five-year revenue requirement or forecast. Just to summarize what a revenue requirement is, that's all the operating and maintenance costs, it's cash capital outlays for capital projects, it's your current debt, and if there are any proposed new bond issues. And then making sure that water and wastewater rates that you have in place are sufficient to recover all of those costs while also meeting coverage requirements on your debt service and things like that. This is very important, the little arrow, I guess it's an arrow thing going across the middle. But we make sure the rates are equitable to the residential and commercial customer classes. We'll look at how those different customer classes use water, place demands on the system from a peaking standpoint and things like that. We always make sure the rates are easy to implement. Any rate design changes we're proposing, we always make sure we talk with the billing department and meet with them to make sure it's something your billing software and billing system can implement. And then we'll make sure those rates recover the full cost of the service and also, to the extent needed, public education, which can go beyond just presentations like this. So basically, what we've laid out in our proposal are these four phases. Again, we'll determine the water and wastewater revenue requirement. We will then design retail water and wastewater rates. And then phase three, we are going to look at ancillary fees or what I call miscellaneous fees. These are some of the other fees that you have, such as if you want to put in place a conservation fee, if you want to look at your current cutoff policy for folks that are not paying their bills. What's the policy? What are the reconnect fees, deposits, and things like that? Again, as was mentioned earlier, whatever the rates are that we design, the minimum bills, the volumetric rates, and these fees, and the fees that were mentioned earlier, all of those go to recover the total cost then of operating the water and wastewater utility. We'll then, in the final phase, issue a report, do a presentation, similar to kind of how I am here right now, this evening, speaking to you. And then we have a model that will provide the city staff and will provide model training on that. So to be very clear as to what, at the end of the study, will the, the city receive? So what I really refer to our rate studies that we do, it's really a planning document. It's a five-year forecast going out for the fiscal years 2018 through 2022, looking at your total costs for what it'll cost to operate the utility, water and wastewater. The rates that need to be implemented changes, if any, to ensure the financial integrity of that utility. And then in this plan, in the study, is a very specific and clear description of the process of what rates need to be implemented or changed, if any, and in what particular fiscal years. And then finally, we'll close with and provide a financial modeling tool and training. It's an Excel-based model. We give these to a lot of our clients. Well, we don't give them, you end up paying for them. But it's a model that then, going forward, you can use to do what-if scenarios to look at your, your rates. And then finally, in closing, a couple intangibles. Again, this is a primary line of business. Half the stuff I do is water and wastewater related. The other is solid waste, like when I was here eight to 10 years ago. The other thing, we focus on community is your size. If you look at the majority of the clients we do water, wastewater, cost of service studies for, you know, it's in this population range of 10 to about 100,000. We have a reputation in the market. It's a good reputation and we live by our reputation. So we have to make sure we give you a quality product. And we have a track record of developing long-term relationships, and so we'd like to continue that. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
Dave, I suppose your process takes a lot of data from our folks in terms of infrastructure, inventory, age of infrastructure, et cetera, right? I mean, you're, you're utilizing a lot of objective data.
That, that's very, very true. We'll spend a lot of time with getting their capital improvement plan, laying that into the revenue requirement and a lot of their billing data.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
Looking at your pictures, you have a water tower on there. So you would look at our water towers and make sure that we have enough water for the residents and if we needed to incorporate a new one, you would let us know too?
Well, thank you for clarifying and asking that question. What we're focused on exclusively is the financial plan. And so we're going to look at what they need to operate the utility for the next five years. We will not look at the infrastructure and say, hey, that tower needs to be replaced or what have you. What we will do is, in their capital improvement plan, if the city has laid out, hey, we have to upgrade or paint this tower, if we have to do these repairs at the wastewater treatment plant, all part of their plan, we'll make sure that the revenue generated through rates is sufficient, so there's enough money so they can do all those things. Does that make it, does that?
I understand now.
Echoing Councilman Solis's question, amongst other things we have looking forward is a aqua storage and recovery project. We have a test project going now. It's fully funded, I believe. Don't think there's any funding, but we would go forward with additional ASRs if the feasibility works out, which we hope it will. We also have off-channel storage that we have a engineering plan for. And I want to say, do you remember the number 3.2 million, Gil? It sounds approximately correct. Would this study take into consideration the future plans to bring those to fruition and set up a rate structure that they could be paid for out of this fund?
I'll leave Dave follow me, but as you recall, we always do a five-year C I P. Those projects is within our C I P. We have designated certain funds to, for the ASR already established in that C I P. Any new project that, that during this process, because we're going to have a lot of integration going on, there's going to be a lot of talk with Donald, his folks, to say, okay, what, especially on the capital needs too, so what items needs to be looked at as well too. So there might be things currently not on that C I P that might just surface up to the top. But the ones you have mentioned, I believe they already have been targeted for the funding for those items. Now, if something might pop up, that'd be in our conversation and then we, and then that's where we develop, talk about how we're going to generate the extra income, if it's going to be a bond issued or it was going to be really through a rate structure. For example, we did, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One thing that we have talked about is that, as you well know, a reoccurring water and sewer line replacement that we always do annually is a million dollars. One thing that we have talked today, it's like, we'd like to see what mechanisms other cities do and what, what is the, maybe a better fine tune number that we need to do to replace a water and sewer line? So we're going to look at those items too as well. But as to the C I P, the ones you talked about, those items have been targeted already for the funding sources as is. So, but if then the new ones come up, that's where this conversation will come later and be presented to counsel down the road as to where the funding would come to as well.
Well, even with this study, which I think is a wonderful thing, we surely do need to do it. We already have some items that we had to cut out for maintenance. It should have been in this year's budget, deferred maintenance. Should we change our rate right now to cover for what was cut out?
It's going to be counsel's decision how, how they want to move forward. But from my perspective, Donald's perspective, from a staff level, of course, city manager too, because she's food chain. But we like to get our hands into this project, go through all the corners and everything else, and come back with a study where, okay, this is what we're looking at. Because this, this goes at a five-year period, it's not only a one year. So I like to, if possible, let's do this. Let's turn every rocks and look at everything, like you mentioned. I know you, you're addressing the, the valves, for example. That probably be in play too with this whole rate structure too. So I would suggest, let's do this.
Well, by definition, it would be.
We'll come back.
Because it was deferred.
Exactly. And Donald's aware that we're going to look at all deferred type of things too. So if we can go in, look at all those items, and then come back to counsel with a proposal structure and a proposed plan of action, I prefer that way. But it's up to counsel how they want to move forward. But I would suggest, let's wait and we can do it over a certain, starting next year.
Most all of us that have messed around this any given period of time know that there needs to go up. Now, the question is, how much? Are we going to have a dollar shock when we come to the bottom of the barrel? As opposed to maybe getting 24 cents now or whatever that rate would be to compensate for what we know is a shortfall?
Well, I hate to say a number out there because I know it's going records public information, but my gut feeling is say it's not going to be that bad if you're on the water side. But we're going to look at in the future, different other type of studies. I know you've been interested in the, the storm water drainage. That's a separate issue in itself. We don't have a rate for that itself. So that's a different ballgame. That might be a different rate there. That might be a different rate shock if you want to consider that. But as to this one, it's more where we are right now with our operating costs, what's been left out a little bit, encompass that. And our, our rate structure, can they be adjusted differently? For example, our variable rates, they're set in tiers, as you well know. Is there a way to maybe we can change the range a little bit and generate a little more income or et cetera? It's just all those platitudes we're going to look at. I can't tell you what, if there's anything result from the study from a rate point of view. But that's why we do this, is to, it's been a long time we looked at this. I'm glad David mentioned it because every time I go to a rating agency call, one of the questions is this, and I'm glad to say this time hopefully this will prove that we're doing one. They like these studies. They want to make sure from the bond side, are we capturing everything? Are we generating enough?
And by definition, we are not.
Well, that's a matter of opinion, Mr. Halpaska, but I'm not saying you're wrong or right, but that's a matter of opinion, I think. How lo, I'm sorry. How long will this take? When will we see it back?
Yeah, and I, I think this would maybe help you also is we're, we're budgeting this study to take about four months. So we're looking at it getting done, completed by the end of the calendar year. So probably a final presentation in December, depending on holidays, early January. And your, your question is a valid, a good question. The one thing I would mention is if you hold off on the rates, which I tend to agree, holding off right now, we're only talking about four months and, and then having a good study to document what you need to do when. And, and four months should not be, cause a huge issue there, problem.
Well, it's been a number of years since we've changed the last rate, so yeah, that's why we're under the bridge, so to speak.
I have a question. I think it was last year during the budget year, or I remember when we were talking about rates. And I remember Emmett was still in council and he mentioned something about having a study to. something about having a study to see if the rates were comparable, because there was such a discrepancy or a big old gap between the commercials and the
Well, his idea is, well,
Residential.
First, we don't have a commercial versus residence. Our rate structure is based more on flow of the size of the pipe.
Right, right.
Of course, the bigger the pipe, the more flow, more demand on the system. And the point he was coming out, like, is the variable side. We have it structured a certain way. How do we know that's really the effective way of doing it? And that started the conversation.
Right, okay, so that's what I'm thinking.
And we said, we need to look at this and go forward with it. And here we are tonight.
Yes.
I want to go back to the discussion where we were talking about the CIP, and that you said that there are some items that are already identified in the CIP, but that funding is also identified, I believe, is what you were saying, which was leading me to believe that you're not going to be looking at items in the CIP if funding is identified as something other than this.
No, ma'am.
And I'm hoping I'm wrong.
Thank you for restating that. I didn't meant we're not going to look at it. We're going to look at it, but as you recall, we had a plan of action, how the CIP is going to be funded, and our debt capacity coming in. All that we'd be encompassed to as well, making sure we're still in line with our target. You, we're going to look at it. Just that from my gut feeling, I think everything is there. We might have to modify, but everything is targeted to the funding. For example, the ASR, if I said that right, we have that targeted sales tax over the years. How are we going to fund that? But we're going to still look at the whole CIP from the water wastewater perspective projects, and make sure, when we look at our debt capacity, make sure everything is still tying. But there might be a project that this might, the project might come up during this process that we might have to look at it too as well. But you're absolutely, we're going to look at everything. But I didn't meant to say we're not, we're going to ignore it. That's not the part. If I did say that, that's not what I meant.
Thank you.
Well, just as on the landfill, we just finished buying some land for future needs. That's included in those rates. We should look at the water the same way, because we are going to need future water needs, off-channel storage, aquifer storage and recovery, additional river rights, whatever we can get our hands on. There's no one magic bullet, no one answer for everything. But we don't have a funding mechanism for that at the moment. And this is where the funding should come from.
One of the most important discussions when we conduct these types of studies, we'll sit down with the water wastewater utility folks on the operations and planning side, and the financial side. The CIP, putting that together is one of the most critical pieces we will always put in and have, we have a lot of discussion on that piece, because you want to get that into the overall plan. You're right. And I will say, one good thing the city's being proactive on is the ongoing repair, funding of repair and replacement for aging infrastructure. We have a number of clients that do that. We have a number that are playing catch-up. And that's tough when the average age in your system is 80 years plus everywhere for the system, so.
Well, if no effort is made, 100% of nothing is nothing.
I'll have to think about that one, but I think you're right.
If we go up nothing, we've got nothing.
Well, correct.
Okay, good discussion. Any other questions? Eagerly await. I'll see you in December. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for E 911 services and declaring an effective date.
Okay, motion and second. Are there any questions?
Not. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. E five? Oh, it's a bit of a long presentation. Yes. Who read it all? Come on, Josie. I know you.
I started to really believe you, but I said, you know, I saw the packet, and I got, oh my God.
Is that one eye?
Okay. E five?
Item E five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept a donation from a vested interest in canines to provide two canine bullet and stab protection vests for the city's canine officers and declaring effective date.
I move to adopt.
You had a motion and second there? Okay. These are for the dogs.
That's what I wanted to know.
Not for that. Okay. So we're going to apply for and accept this donation?
If given.
If given, right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I sure hope, good job. I hope you all get it. Let us know if you think about it at a future meeting. And I think that's interesting.
It'll be part of the notification, sir.
Okay, okay. Are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. Good luck, chief.
Before he moves away, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Six years ago, he started with the city of Victoria today on August 15, 2011. It's kind of hard to believe it's been six years. And occasionally, we have these anniversaries on council dates, and occasionally, we have birthdays on council dates. JJ's had both this year.
Both this year, yes.
So is this your birthday today?
His anniversary with the city. Six complete. He's finished six years with us.
I spent my birthday with you all a couple of months ago.
Okay, oh, I see. Okay, yeah. It has gone by quick.
It is Ricky's birthday today.
Yeah, I was going to say, Councilman, Garge's birthday today. You let everybody know you're 60, or you're holding together great, so looking good there. Yeah.
We appreciate the chief's service, though, to the community.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Okay, the next one, we need an executive session before we go for E six. Would you like to adjourn us now?
Yes.
Are we going to just go next door?
Right here, it's fine. The city council will recess for executive session on this the 16th day of May 2017 at 6:17 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, a consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation, or another matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, city saving money because the lights off while we weren't
That's right.
Waiting for my sandwich.
So the Good. The city council will resume open session at 6:35 PM. We have one item remaining on agenda, Mayor, which is item E six. That is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary in settlement of an EEOC charge and declaring an effective date.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Should be no questions. All those in
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you. This concludes our agenda. Nothing else? Thank you, counsel. We're adjourned.